I have a chance, Keith, if you'll measure that space up there. Just send me an email, letting me know how big a space I have.
Okay, you can hand it to all of you.
Want me to order them? Adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, I do have a finance committee report.
To approve as amended.
Second.
Just maybe we'll take the fire chiefs issue up out of order here, so we can sit through the rest of things here.
I have to turn it on.
So we've been, I was approached several years ago about cost recovery. And I think we did bring it up a few years ago. We just weren't ready for it. And just to explain to you what this cost recovery is. It's a secondary billing system. Besides what we have for our EMS billing, cost recovery with bills for car accidents or any special incidences that we'd have in town. Basing probably 90 to 95% of that being car accidents. What this company does is builds the auto insurance. The auto insurance is willing to pay out some fees, but if they don't get charged, they don't pay. So there's 61 towns, cities, communities, and state of Maine that do it. They've seen, you know, good return on it. What this covers is a lot of out-of-staters or out of people out of community that come in through our community. And something happens to them, it's unfortunate, but you know, we're all required to have insurance to state of Maine. So that would help us cover the costs of fire gear. If we ruin fire gear or the use of our equipment or the fire truck or the personnel. So I did provide the policy. The policy that we created is based on a template that this company provides with the pay rates, the pay rates as well. So it's nothing that we just popped up and threw on a piece of paper, and this is what they recommended. I did have the agreement from them as well. I don't know, you guys have a copy of that? Yeah, so. Yeah, that's, that's basically it. I mean, the way we wrote the policy is that, and I updated the version. If anybody in Arundel should get in a car accident, be involved, their insurance will be billed. But if the amount goes beyond that, their insurance, let's say that their insurance covers, they will not be responsible for that amount. So if it's $1,500, the insurance only covers $1,000, then their Arundel resident won't be responsible for that $500. So that kind of covers the Arundel people. And I guess most communities, that's what they do.
So if it was a piece of equipment, such as I'm looking at this, this farm equipment that wasn't insured, then in effect, it wouldn't cost them anything because there'd be nothing to collect from. Okay.
So this company works on a contingent fee basis?
Yep.
What's, what's the fee?
It's based on what they take in.
And what's the percentage?
Yeah, how much, how much do we get out of this versus paying them?
I forgot the percentage, John, I didn't want to miss, miss, quote you. I thought it was like a 12 or 15% charge on their part. And that's taken out of their billing, so whatever they collect, they collect their amount and then the rest comes to us.
Well, if they don't collect, then there's no cost there. They only take out any fee.
That they collect.
From what they collect, okay.
So basically, this is something that we, it's revenue for us either way.
Right now, we get nothing, right?
Right now, we get nothing.
It certainly would be nice to know how much, what the percentage is, what they get out of it.
Right.
I can't find it out of both of these documents.
20%, 20% compensation right here.
Is that?
On the bottom of the first page of the year.
Which, what's the date on that one? The date on the form you're looking at?
Sorry, I don't have a date.
There's no date?
It's just their agreement, their cost recovery agreement. Did you guys?
It's not on the, it's not on the sheet, it's not under.
I wonder if you guys have a copy of this?
I mean, there's, there's nothing here on. No, we don't, we don't have that one.
This is their agreement that they just sent me. Basically, that's what we were signed to go into, to protect with them.
This is the. So essentially, if you enter any agreement with these folks, Bill, who is establishing, they have recommendations here, but these recommendations can be reviewed by board, the board members. Any adjustments that may be applicable to Arundel. And then what happens would be that this company would then, once there's an accident, you report the accident to this company and then they go after the insurance company?
Whatever's recorded on our software.
Okay.
So when we go a car accident, we record the vehicle information, all that stuff. And the primary reason of the call is usually, if it's a medical, it's a medical, if it's a car accident, it's a motor vehicle accident. So that would pop up on our reporting. And they would have access to that piece where they would see motor vehicle accidents. They could tie in, and what they can do is, they require, they request a police report for the accident, and they tied it together. And that's how it gets filled up.
And they bill it according to that. So, so essentially, if it's a $1,000 accident, they're going to take 200 bucks and we're going to get 800.
Basically. And he did tell me that most of the car accidents, what they do is they require police support. And most police supports do cost money. So that's a cost on them that they have to pay, you know, it's a cost to them business.
So the billing would be based on what you have here, not what, because I know there's some prices here from looks like Thompson.
Yep.
Those are a little bit different.
Right.
But the billing would be based on what you said it costs.
Whatever I send them, what we created in the policy, and I went based on the surrounding towns that are pretty close to our size. And I also put that we can review this in a year, if we're not charging enough or the, we need to increase the rate, sir. Whatever, we're going to make an adjustment in a year or every year.
Yeah, you know, I certainly, in a year's time, I know that this is going to get put into, it looks like it's going to get put into the capital equipment account. But it'd be, it'd be nice that, you know, after the end of the year to know exactly how much we've collected from this.
Absolutely.
This is definitely a source of revenue that we don't have today.
Yeah, it's just something that we don't have.
You guys do make a ton of calls.
We do.
So to Belma's point, when she mentioned about like the farm vehicle, I mean, usually a lot of places like that, if an, if equipment isn't registered, it falls under their homeowners' service.
Or the farm or whatever.
Right.
So there could be potentially something there, but if they could collect something from the insurance, like I said, if it's $2,500, they only get 2,000 from the insurance. The rest is waived, there's nothing that has to be, you know, brought in from that person.
Do you all have a copy of this agreement? Okay, let me get you a copy.
At least I don't have one, but.
My question there is, I, I think a lot of people try to prevent claims against their homeowners' insurance or their car insurance. So if you have two vehicles in an accident, and the vehicle one is the cause of the accident, but vehicle two, you also had to respond. They're going to send a bill to both insurance companies. So vehicle two, even though they are not at fault, they're going to have a claim on their insurance.
Well, the, the state, there's. Police departments don't determine who's at fault, it's the insurance companies that do. So at that point, they would have to determine who's at fault, and that's where the bill would be.
So if, if a claim, yeah, so if a claim was sent to insurance company two, and they said, hey, our people weren't at fault, we're not going to pay this claim.
Right.
Okay.
And how does it work if there's an accident and both of them decide not to go to insurance and they covered themselves, but you had to respond to the call? What do we build, we build the individuals or they don't?
They probably, I don't know, they would probably come back to me and they would probably say, hey, what do you want to do?
I know sometimes that happens, but people don't want to put stuff on their insurances and.
Yeah. But yeah, if it's, if it's like small stuff, like, you know, probably you wouldn't get anything out of the, the smaller offender vendors, but it's the big car wrecks that we get with, you know, totaling vehicles.
Yeah, we just, we just spend the hours.
With the 18-wheeler accidents that Jack nice and spilling diesel all over the road, and now we got to pick that up. Thank you for doing that. I thought I included that in the package.
A couple of, who's, these fees here, who sets these, Keith?
Says what?
The, these fees that are here in this policy.
The fees are determined by the, the billing company. The billing company gives us.
I think they have, I think they have fee recommendations, but I think at the end of the day, you would have to say.
I think we have to establish those fees. We may take the recommendations, but I think it has to come from this board.
Yep.
I mean, he has those established here, right? He's already got the fees established.
But what authority does someone saying, I don't know, the chief has the authority to that? I think this board may have the only authority to establish fees. I mean, we can do that. I think Chief is looking for us to bless this agreement and authorize him to sign up at the head of the town, right? Or the manager's side. But I think those fees ought to be part of the motion that we bring forward to.
That's fine, we can adjust that.
Yeah.
These are fees that you create?
Yep, and that was based on what I looked at from the other towns that were provided.
Yeah.
What other towns?
They're in your package, I think there was Etna, there was. I, I think I, Keith, I gave.
Yeah, I provided a bunch of stuff.
Thompson.
Thompson, yeah, there's, there's just a bunch of stuff.
There's a bunch of them.
Yeah.
Those are two towns along the interstate, well, yeah, we're along the interstate too.
Sometimes we're actually just charging for structural fires and stuff like that, I didn't think we need to go to that, that level of a step.
I think we'd be in deep due to if we did.
So Chief, well, it's just the client, client responsible for a bunch of stuff here, which would be you. You have the personnel and everything in place to be able to supply them with all the information that they need.
It's already in place, yep.
So your database, you just take that and forward it over to them?
They just grab it, it's called the National Fire Incident Reporting. And first, and first gets reported to the state every month. So what they would do is they tie into that. They tie into the state, they look at a run those calls, and whatever shows up as motor vehicle accidents, they pick up. And then they get a few support for those calls.
They would pick up based on what you tell them, right?
Right.
They don't, they're not going to automatically go in there and.
No, it'll say motor vehicle accident.
Right.
So they'll tie into that call, and then they'll request a police report from that call. Police report will provide the insurance information from the drivers, the driver's information, everything, so. That's what they do.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions, I'm sorry I didn't catch this before, but the agreement, basically, I, I have no. Yes, I have no issue with the agreement or the fees that could be attached to it, but some of this paperwork talks about some sort of ordinance enactment?
Yeah, he said, and sometimes, some towns require it, some towns don't.
Okay.
So he said, I don't know, we'll talk to your board and see what they require, depends on the charter. That's why they, they offered me a lot of paperwork.
I guess.
So we can decide which direction to go in.
So our regular billing company will still do the regular billing?
They do our medical stuff, medical EMS.
And this is everything else, okay? All those towns, all right. These are the ones, east of the town, Central Maine Cost Recovery Client.
Towns that they're.
That's the client list.
That they work with today?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, they started here in Central Maine, LBN, Augusta Aurora, Belgrade, Brewer, Calis, Canton, Campbell, China. Just this, Fairfield.
All rural towns.
I mean, Dale, you have Freedom, Glenborne, Goldsboro, Holden, Allen. And that, Lyman, Goodens Mills. Yeah, just a matter of one, Keg, Medway.
So what are towns like Bedford and Kennebunk, they must have their own internal and department that goes out to stuff like this?
They don't.
I mean, Plymouth is just a tiny fire department, they're smaller than we are.
These are all small towns, I'm kind of curious what the bigger towns, they must have a heck of a lot more.
No idea.
Action going on.
No idea, I know there's some bigger towns in there as well.
Portland's in there.
Manchester.
Portland's in there?
Yep.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's just a matter of if they want to be involved or not, some people don't really know about it.
Holland.
What does Saco do, you know?
I have no idea, I don't think so, because we don't, we don't, we don't provide the detailed information that they would need.
South Portland. Thompson, Turner, Denver. Waterville.
Mattel Watson.
West Goddard, when, when's that, you go, that's the list.
Well, I for one don't see no harm in getting into this. Certainly, it's that you can get out in 30 days and.
Yeah, yeah, we're looking at that termination, if we don't like it, we get out. Right, I agree, I agree with that.
Yeah. Yeah, they make it easy, so it's, if it works for you, it works for you, if it doesn't, it doesn't.
Have you checked with any of those towns to see how it's working for them?
Goodness knows it's done great. South Portland, their first month, they collected $25,000 dollars because they were, they were able to collect, go back and collect money from previous time.
Wow.
I mean, I think it's a win-win for us.
Yeah.
One to set the policy and, and fees as presented by the chief, and then one to authorize the town manager to enter into the contract with cost recovery. Simple, the fees first, I think.
I'll make a motion without the policy and. I'll second that motion.
For the discussion, all in favor then? Okay.
And I'll make a motion for the town managers.
Anybody discussing with it? None, all in favor? Thanks, Chief.
I got one more thing.
Okay.
State of Maine is requiring our ambulance service, your EMS service. Typically, we should have had one by now, now they're mandating it. By January 1st, 2022, we need to have a. Oh, it says all services providing the care at the advanced EMT or paramedic level will be required to have a medical director.
A medical what?
Medical director. So.
What's a medical director?
Doctor on staff.
Really?
Yep. Most places have them, actually all places that I know have them, we just, we had one. That we utilize, he allowed us to utilize his name and his service. He was an ER doctor in, in Bedford, he's recently moved to Vermont. Doug Nielsen was our medical director. And obviously, he's moved to Vermont, we can't use him anymore. So I had been shopping around, it's been a couple of years, I had talked to a gentleman by the name of Dr. Brown. He, he's the medical director out of Goodens Mills. And he does, he was a paramedic in Ogunquid, became a doctor, and is now medical director in Ogunquid. And he works out of Wentworth Douglas. So I had talked to him at a meeting a while back, and he's spiked up some interest and said, yeah, be willing. Last month, he hit me up, says, you guys have medical director yet? I said, no, I was, you know, yours must have been burning as I was getting ready to contact. So we got together, he's proposing a lot of good stuff. He did provide a contract, and that went to, not Leah, but.
Went to Kathleen.
Kathleen, and she's reviewed that, and we had to come up with a few. The state puts out a medical director's guidelines, like protocols, that the medical director has to follow. So she reviewed that, and we had to come up with a job description, so she reviewed that, everything seems to be pretty good. The fee that Dr. Brown is requiring is $7,500 a year. So I brought that towards Keith, and there's just been a little bit of problem with the salary. Because at first, it was going to be a salary, then it's going to be an hourly rate. So we got a meeting actually tomorrow with him to determine how we're going to work around.
Right, Kathleen's still working on the agreement, we haven't received a final draft of it yet. So we're not prepared, but we're going to meet with Dr. Brown tomorrow and at least discuss some of the changes that would be necessary within this. I think the, the issue we have is that now we're required to have one, which is new and effective as of January 1st. So our goal is to at least talk with Dr. Brown again, to have, have our attorneys tighten up the agreement, and then bring this agreement before you, at your meeting on the 27th, is what our hope is. It should be the last meeting of the year before, before January 1st.
I'm sorry, I need a copy of this, job description. I actually put this off right before stuff. This is what Kathleen. Oh, okay, good, you guys have been talking about this?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Every fire department in the state has to do this?
Provides an EMS service, medical director.
Above the basic level, so if it's advanced or paramedicine, you have to, you're required.
When you, when you get above the, the basic level, you start providing, actually, the basics now do it too. And I'm surprised it didn't include the basics. But now all the medications that are involved, the medical procedures that we do, there has to be oversight over a do, a doctor has to oversee that. So that's, I just made it that way. We also need quality assurance, QA, which is reviewed by our peers to make sure we're still on track on our medical procedures and everything. Make sure our care is being provided the way it's supposed to be.
So, so how, how long have we known this?
It's, came out September.
So in September, the state said, you're going to do this, and they gave us until January to do it. Well, they, yeah, they sent out some guidelines a while back. And typically, like every jurisdiction that the state becomes involved in, there's certain time limits that they put on it. So now we're, we're working to, to accomplish what we need to on this one before January 1st. And what exactly does that medical director do? Does he get involved when there's a crash?
He can, yeah.
You want me to, you want me to give you a copy of the job description they're working on, so you can look at it?
He can actually come to work. He can work on the ambulance.
So he can work on the ambulance, he does all of that for $7,500 bucks a year?
Yep.
And what happens if, he must be with all the towns, right? Or is he just?
He's with Goodens Mills right now and Ogunquid.
So if he's involved with something else and he's not available, what happens?
That's why it's only $7,500 a year.
I mean, are we liable for something that, yeah, it might, you know, if we need to have them, they need to be at our disposal, and you're in an accident, you can't get a hold of them, what, what do these guys do? We can call the ER.
You always, yeah, we have, we call the ER, that's.
It's usually always a doctor stand by any emergency room we've caused anyone in trouble.
Yeah.
So, yeah, why isn't that except, not because of the state? I think it's just a metal call volume now, they're probably, they made that as innovative as it calls, but one guy in the ER just can't handle the volume.
Well, not only that, but there has to be someone overseeing the, overseeing the, whatever, what, what's going on in the service. I mean, we, we administer narcotics, we administer all kinds. I mean, we, we, uh, we administer narcotics. We administer all kinds of medications now. Uh, and it, it, it has to be a doctor's name on those medications. It has to be overseen by someone.
Obviously, we have, we have to do this. Um.
Will you give him training though?
Yeah, absolutely. He's willing to do all kinds of trainings, quarterly, um. All kinds of stuff, yeah.
And, you know, I mean, this is going to be part of your budget for next year when you, when you submit your budget, but what do we do when it's done? You know, if all of a sudden we hire this guy in January, between January, where, where are those funds coming from?
That's why I'm here.
Well, hold on, I'll get you some funds.
Yeah.
I want to make a payment. Is your beat anywhere with the anywhere or would be July one to two thirty?
Uh, yeah, well, depends on. It's effective January first, so I guess could go January to December, renewing September.
So really looking at three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars in this fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
I, I mean, we're not, I mean, we're nowhere near prepared to, to bring this forward and have this signed quite yet. We'll have, we've got a meeting with the doctor tomorrow and then I'm sure the chief will continue to work with the attorney to iron out any issues that they may have before we bring an agreement before you again to look at and decide what we want to do.
Seventy-five hundred is a worldly town proved us to go to five grand, right? So we just have to go to the town to approve.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, we could, we could do the thirty-five hundred and, and then the rest of it be part of next year's budget.
But the thirty-five hundred would have to come out of.
Or you do what I'm going, yep, yep. Or you do what I'm going to instruct the chief to do would be to find the thirty-seven fifty within his budget.
I'm glad you said that. I don't have to say it.
Squeeze, chief.
Chief keeps coming up with stuff and we keep saying, go find it.
Hey, I'm mandated by law to have this guy, so.
We'll make it work. I'm not worried about the financial piece as much as.
I mean, it's cheap money.
I love these mandates that the state hands you and said, here, April. Yeah.
All right, so we're going to take this up at the.
Yeah, hopefully we'll be prepared for you to look at it and, uh, we can take some action at your meeting on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, until January first.
Right.
So, you know, if we don't take action at the next meeting, we're out of compliance.
Sure, the state would have some leniency on that.
Sure, they will.
See, January first.
What's that?
What happens if we're not ready to January first?
I think they'll, they'll give us a, an extension. If they know we're working on something, a contract or whatever, you know, it's just a matter of semantics, just to get things done. I don't think there'll be a problem.
Okay. Anything else, chief?
That's enough.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thanks, chief.
All righty. Good night.
So let's head back to the agenda here. Public forum.
Uh, yes, all of you have a copy of the Arundel Municipal Building plaque. If you would look it over, uh, this is what is actually being made and I should be picking it up this week.
Okay.
Uh, so we've gone over all of the commas and semicolons and misspellings and hopefully we've caught everything because this is what's going to be on the wall.
Okay. Anything else in public forums? Jack, you have anything for us? Okay. And it's November twenty-two.
I didn't see anything wrong with those, so I'll make a motion to accept and submit it.
All in favor? The board's report, Thelma Finance.
Well, I will tell you that the new finance director at the RSU, Matt Graziano, I finally just took everything and sent it to Keith and said, here. Because when they send you an agenda, every little blue section like the, uh, November dashboard probably has twelve pages to it that he goes over. He is very, very detailed. And he did go over the ED two seventy-nine report and he went over in depth the essential programs and services. Um, the, the way that the state, this is one of the pages that he printed out. The way that the state figures everything for your essential programs and services and how they figure EPS, the per pupil costs, the salaries. Uh, he did say that with salaries, the state takes the average of salaries over the entire state. Uh, and of course, the RSU twenty and is over EPS. And, uh, as far as the budget, the budget is looking wonderful. The audit came in at, at A-plus. We should have copies of that that I can bring to Keith here before long. And we are starting the budget process. That's my agenda on the last page. February, Jack? The February that we're starting? Yes. Tuesday, February eighth, we will start at seven-thirty in the morning. And that day we will work until ten o'clock or so going over the different, the different budgets. So that's when the departments are presenting their budgets.
Ira's going to be involved with that also, right?
Yeah, he's involved until, he's involved this year. He'll be involved until, uh, he leaves, yeah. But if you have any questions, believe me, this, Matt Graziano has, it has everything. I don't print it out anymore because if I hit print, it would be printing about forty pages for every, for every agenda, everything they talk over.
Okay, thank you for that. Chase.
Uh, yeah, um, the last week, we had our first Kennebunk River advisory group meeting. It's five of us on the board. Uh, Henry and Brooke Deneman, he lives right next door to Henry. They're kind of chair, co-chair, uh, myself. Jody Castallow, which I've never met, she's a president, obviously. She does a lot of work at the Wells National Reserve, Lawton Farm. She's got some affiliation there. Um, and Sam, Sam Hall, uh, those are the five of us. We, it was more or less an introductory meeting, um, just to get the feel from all the board members as to how much involvement we think our board is, should, should go and we talked about the report a little bit. Um, I hope you guys have had a chance to look through that report. They get into great detail about bacteria levels and where they feel as if certain levels are high because, because of what they're finding. We felt as if a little bit more data was, was needed to, uh, prove kind of what they're finding. And they agreed that people, they've had, they have funds available and people available to do more testing, which they're going to start doing. Um, but they, they are pushing of the septic and leach systems, um, along this river border. You know, they're finding that a lot of the houses along Kenny McRiver and all its tributaries, Gothmo Brook, Duck Brook, up in the Lyman, there's a bunch of brooks in the Lyman rivers in the Lyman, come from Taylor Pond, failing septic systems. And, um, they, they feel as if that is probably eighty percent of the problem along the river. I mean, I told them, I said, what, from a builder standpoint? I can't even begin to tell you how many houses are built. For out of town people that moved up here from Massachusetts, Connecticut, New York. And you tell them, you know, you tell these people they have a septic system and they look at you with this just blank face, like, what do you mean? I have to pump the septic tank if it's, I don't understand how that works. And you know that, you know, maybe that initial pump might get done, but I, I truly believe that these, these people who live up here, they just continue to flush and the tanks never get pumped on a timely manner and.
And they're flushing stuff down that they shouldn't be.
Yeah. So we all, we, we spoke a lot on the septic part of it and we felt as if our initial approach from a board is one, education of the people along this river. Just trying to get information to them, you know, just want to remind you that you have a septic system. Uh, we're going to try to compile some data as to, um, when, you know, the oldest to newest, essentially, essentially the systems. Like we picked Gothmo Brook to start. So we're going to try to find the houses that are along Gothmo Brook and just try to get some data as to when these systems were installed. Um, try to do some sort of town hall meeting setup where residents are, can either zoom in or come to a meeting and just get some information into their hands as to, you know, we're finding problems in the, in the water. We'd really like your help. If you're not aware as to how your system works, this, here's some information. So Henry thinks, um, Henry being involved at the state level, he thinks there's a ton of funding available. You know, whether it be grant programs, if people have failed systems, um, Henry seems to think that there's money available to replace his systems. Uh, people are available to join our committee to have informational meetings. But it was, it was very, this meeting was very like, uh, introductory. I mean, we all just wanted to know each other's thoughts. We definitely agree that we need some more data, but, um, you guys, if you get a chance in there, uh, they mentioned a lot that some of their testing was done at, when the water velocity was low. Uh, so I asked a question. I said, well, I can almost guarantee that that would cause the test data to, to spike up with lower water flow, you know what I mean? It makes sense. The water becomes more stagnant and you don't get the oxygenation of the water flow. So we were going to try to, uh, uh, Jody was going to reach out to some of the people that she knew that were involved in testing to see. You know, can, can we maybe perhaps get some data taken like in the spring months when the water's flowing really fast? We talked about a ton of stuff, but have a meeting for January eighteen. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it.
Nice. Keith, there's a, the federal recovery fund debt. I mean, your timeframe may not work out right, but would those funds be able to be used for something like that?
I'd have to look at the, um, the criteria that's established for that and see if it would fall under that type of, um, activity.
More than, more than likely, those funds are going to run out anyway from the time any action gets taken care of. It had to be done by, what was the, what was the, um?
Were you talking about the American Rescue Fund?
Yeah.
I think they're there for, for a while. If I have to look at the paperwork again, I can't recall.
There was a date associated that you had to have something done by a certain date.
I'll look at the paperwork again if I don't recall.
There I know is, is a group. I mean, we all know this isn't going to be, the payment group is going to be fixed next year. Hey, look, all the fish are back.
Yeah.
This is going to be like a shitty program.
Yeah.
But the three communities of, uh, Lyman has a, a group of, of individuals that are, uh, that are, that are getting, I think they have three on their board. Kenny Bunk has seven, I believe. So I think one of our, I think at the January eighteenth meeting, we're going to try to get the three communities together to see if maybe instead of, instead of each community kind of doing the wrong thing, let's, let's try to get together and collaborate on some effort here. I'll keep you guys informed.
Good.
Moving on to managers' reports. Keith.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, just to let you know that I, this, this afternoon, we completed our second meeting with the new management from Casella. Who, after our first meeting, they wanted to take a look at our, um, our operation. Um, their thoughts, uh, based on what they feel that could, that could happen up there to make it a little bit better. And to also, um, indicate to us which, which I think we have known for quite a while, uh, now that um, that Casella has been taking a huge loss in reference to the operation of the transfer station. Um, we, you know, in the past, we tried to quantify that. They quantified it for us today. Somewhere between a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred thousand dollars a year that they think they're losing in the operation. Now, they came up with a variety of thoughts about how they feel that if they were given carte blanche you, ability to run it, what they think they would, uh, they would do. The, the first thing they talked about would be to establish a location at the gate off of Bergeron Drive as a location to pay. So in essence, what would happen is that folks would come up um, and stop at that gate before they even go up the road to go around the building to drop off their material. Be identified what they have, pay based on what they have, and then be able to travel on up the road and then get rid of their stuff. They strongly recommend that we get rid of the scale system. It's slowing things down considerably based on their observations. And that, um, we should go to a, uh, a different system via bags or, um, or a, continue to use the punch card and say, uh, one thirty-three gallon trash is two punches. One thirty-three gallon of recyclable is one punch and move on, um, with that type of scenario. Um, they talked a lot about, um, the ability or the lack of ability to, um, to take loose demo. They're, they're, they're losing their shirts on demo right now. Not, not only they, they, they may not be recognizing all the demo that's being placed there, where it's coming from. But the cost that they have associated with demo right now at forty-five dollars a yard is extremely low in their opinion, uh, to the point where if they're taking demo, they're losing money every time they take it. So there was a variety of discussions that we had. One of the things I did ask them to do was to provide to me a cost of the, the tonnage that they're collecting. Cause they, when they take it away, they weigh that tonnage and the trucking cost associated with that. And provide to me a amount of dollars that that, that is. To tell me what that is. And my thought was, and we talked a little bit about this with Roger, the Casella folks, is to, uh, implement a, uh, a system where a folks would be able to throw away their trash and the recyclables for nothing other than what we would collect as taxpayers within the budget. So in other words, take that dollar amount, whatever it may be, place it into a budget item and then use that. So in essence, when residents go up, if they just have trash and recyclables, they get rid of them free of charge. And then if they have, um, furniture or appliances or bulky items or demo, there would be a separate charge for that and that they would pay that at the, at the gate prior to them coming up. So, um, I've asked them to give me that information. Um, um, once I get that, I'll, I'll report back to you folks, but they're really, uh, you know, they, they indicated to me today, they will honor their contract to the end of it. But I'm not saying they would be strong-handed, but they're saying if we do go to the end of this contract, we will not sign another one based on what we have here in front of us. It's just, it's a, it's a, it's a liability to them. They're losing money. So, and this is something that I think that we had alluded to as, ever since I got here, we've talked about what a great deal we were getting. And for the life of us, we, for the, for. And for the life of us, we, for the, for oftentimes, we couldn't understand why we were getting it. So, um, whether the, um, past Ca- Casella administration just didn't want to deal with it because it was such a small municipality, uh, we're now finding that they're pinching every penny as well and looking at their, the bottom line. So, um, I've asked them to give me that information. I've also resurrected, the, the new administrative staff knew nothing about our request for, um, curbside pickup. So we've, they've asked us to provide to them whatever information we've already sent to the past management, which we will do. And I, I think that this group of, uh, folks that we have there now are pretty, uh, they, they want to make something work. They just don't know what that's going to be quite yet. And they, they're going to be looking to us to try to be their partners as opposed to what may be transpiring right now. So I think that's all I have to report on right now. I know it's not the best news. Uh, but I think it was something that we, I know that Roger and I were fully expecting at some point that it was going to raise its head and I think it will, um, as we go through this process, so.
Do we have very many of those, excuse, I'm sorry, do we have very many of those folders? The folder you had that showed how much um, you were looking at it when Dan asked about.
What, the Casella?
The, the little fold of, yeah, the one like that.
This one here?
Is that, uh, yeah, that says.
And they're extremely, the new administration is extremely embarrassed by this because they couldn't understand how some of the dollar amounts, particularly for construction debris, uh, clean wood wherever established because they're nowhere near in their view, nowhere near what they're, what they should be charging.
Isn't there in there like for garbage, if you have a can, so much a pound, uh?
Right, it's, it's municipal solid waste, one to fifteen pounds, it's a dollar eighty a pound. So, um, and then.
A trash can full?
Right, and then zero sort recycling is one to fifteen. One of the things that we're looking at is just to is to actually just eliminate that, you know, and just collect it through our tax dollars as opposed to um, having them paid by a punch card.
Yeah, because Charlie said, he'd go up there once, they'd punch, he'd have the same trash can, weighed about the same, they'd do two punches. Then he went up there last week, they did four punches, uh, but
Right, I don't.
Why? There's nothing that says this is what you're going, a punch is this much and this is what you're going to pay for.
I don't think, uh, I don't think our residents were being charged appropriately for the, for stuff they were leaving there. And for me, it, it, I was sort of taking the, the position that if they're not worried about it, I'm not going to worry about it. But now they're worrying about it, so.
I mean, it's certainly, certainly been a hell of a deal, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we recognize that. But I've been up there on Saturdays and I've seen people throw debris, uh, debris into the uh, what do I want to say? The demo stuff.
Yeah.
And I don't see anybody paying for it.
Right.
Yeah.
Nothing.
Right.
Nobody, no card is punched, nobody says anything, they throw it and they leave.
Yes.
I mean, I've observed it. I mean, I don't know what those guys, you know, I said, geez.
Yeah, I, I didn't mention that. I said that most of our, our selectmen from one time or another take a pilgrimage there every week or every other week. So they see what's going on. So I think some of the things they're talking about makes sense to me. At least they can begin to um, gather their funds prior to, prior to somebody depositing it. So in that way, they could stop them and say, you got demo, it's going to be X amount of dollars and, uh, you know, give me a check. Um, or, you know, they're not going to take cash, it'll be a check or, or else whatever the system we, we set up, so. Uh, but there, we're working on it and I'm sure we'll have more discussion on it as we, as we move forward.
Yeah, I think it's a good approach to really do it. I think the gate away from there would alleviate some problems. One thing I would stress is, um, there needs to be someone accountable for residency. If we're going to go with tax, the tax dollar, that's a approach. And I mean, nobody's getting up there without a little trash sticker.
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, and that's one of the things that we talked about today. I, uh, I'm in the process of ordering new stickers now. We'll have new clean stickers that we'll, um, issue them uh, here or up there. We'll have staff on duty until we get them out, you know?
A recommendation on stickers?
Sure.
We tell them to put it in their back window instead of the front window?
And why is that?
So that where the attendants can see when you back up, they don't have to.
Well, you're gonna, i- if we set up the, the, the pay, uh.
If you set up at a gate, then I get it.
Yeah, they're going to set it up at the gate. That way, they don't even get through unless they got a sticker and then, you know, they flag them through um, find out what they have. And if they just have trash, they can go up and just dump their trash and move on.
I, I think we're going to be shocked when, when the final figure comes in on how much this is going to be. Because if they're losing a hundred and seventy-five to fifty, to two hundred thousand dollars on top of, you know, whatever else it's costing that, that we're paying for, for tickets, this is going, this is going to be very expensive.
It, it, it could be, let's, you know, I, um, but I think what the, you know, the other thing that we'll be, um, hopefully eliminating will be the fact that, as, as Tom said, those folks that are going up there to get rid of demo material.
Yep.
Which, you know, they indicated to me, if you go to any other place, you're probably looking at a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty dollars for a truckload of that stuff, but especially heavy demo to get rid of. So, uh, it's not cheap.
When we go get rid of demo, we take it to Sanford, it's a hundred and ten dollars a ton.
Okay.
And it don't take much for a ton.
Yeah, right. So, you know, I mean, Phil, Phil's right on.
I mean, I'm certainly in favor of trying to do everything that we can so that it's built into our taxes and nobody has to.
Correct. You're going to get some pushback at that.
Oh, I know, I know that.
You know, because people have their own trash pickup now are not going to want to subsidize the other people who are using it. That's the discussion's going to.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sure it will.
I mean, if we charge for the barrel, I mean, we have two barrels, one barrel for trash, one barrel for recycling. I mean, even if we charge for barrel, as long as you know, if I go up there, this barrel is going to cost me two punches or this barrel is going to cost me three punches and this one's going to cost me two. But how are you going to take care of the people with just a trash bag? Finally, but mine hit one little trash bag or recycling. I mean, if he and Charlie go together, they'll put it in his hours, but you know, how are they going to handle?
But if you don't charge for it, if you don't charge for it, they can just bring it up and that's the other thing, you know, because we have zero sort recycling. I mean, you know how it is, if you go right now, I don't know about you folks, but my wife and my daughter exclusively on Amazon, I don't think there's a day goes by that I don't go home and there's four or five boxes there that I need to break down and take to the, take to the, uh, transfer station and I mean, the amount of cardboard that goes is just astronomical, so.
Oh, yeah.
So I'll keep you reporting out and I'll let you know where we're going, but, um, that's where we are right now. The, the next thing I had, Mr. Chairman, was just a copy of, uh, the special town meeting warrant uh, for you folks to look at. Um, again, um, we did not have a meeting with the budget board last Wednesday. Uh, that we had some folks that were ill, uh, couldn't make it. And then I had some folks that just weren't around together. So we canceled that meeting. We're going to have a Zoom meeting um, Wednesday at six thirty, right before the charter review committee meeting. So we'll have them look at this. I've sent all the packet information to them. Um, and if they have any questions, um, one of the biggest questions I think that we'll all get, and I'm sure that maybe you have, will be, do we have the money in the fund balance to cover whatever expense? And right now, unaudited, we got three million, six hundred thousand in our fund balance. So we're certainly in, in pretty robust shape, uh, at this time, so. What do you mean?
So twenty, twenty-one.
Oh, gotcha. Thanks.
On Jack?
I'm going to, I'll run that Zoom meeting out of my office and then I'll come here and I'll have the, the camera set up so I can tape the charter review meeting that night.
Yeah. Uh, there was.
I did send it to you. I'll, I'll send it again to you. Number in what way? Okay, I'll, I'll resend it. I, I believe I sent that out, but I'll resend it to you. Okay.
Zero. We, earlier with the chief, we talked about possibly updating, we're going to have to update any ordinance or anything from what the chief wants to do? Like setting those fees, does that have to go through a, a town meeting? Do we have to do a?
No.
I'm just trying to make sure that we don't have to have a special town meeting that too much down the road, we have another one.
No, I mean, I think we have authority to set fees, like all building permits, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
Those, we're supposed to be doing that on an annual basis. I think we do those things, but.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So it, right now, we're, we'd be gearing for your meeting on the fourteenth of February for your your special town meeting and we'd have it that evening of your board of selectmen's meeting as we've done in the past, so.
Say good morning to town court on Valentine's Day.
Hopefully everybody will be sweet that day.
That's romantic, though.
We all bring roses.
The, the, the next thing I have, um, is I received a, um, proposal from the planner uh, along with, uh, review by the code officer and the, uh, and Roger at Public Works to make a modification in the exempt private way review procedures as it relates to, uh, the private ways that may already be erected or already be constructed. And to give, um, uh, to look at that in a, in a way that, uh, uh, that staff review would be unnecessary on a road that's already been built. And so that's the proposal, I believe, that's in front of you at this point to look at. Again, this would be something that we probably want to have, uh, Lee Jay come in and talk to you about a little bit more. Uh, it certainly gives us some time to uh, to review it and to decide whether or not you feel it's such a substantial change that you may want to bring the committee back together to look at it. Uh, and it'll give us enough time to, uh, make our, um, annual town meeting if we're going to make any ordinance changes within the ordinance, so. But I thought it was, uh, he provided it to me. I thought I'd get it to you. Um, and at least you gave a look at it. And then if you would like, I can schedule Lee Jay to come in on the twenty-seventh to talk to you a little bit more about it um, and give you his thoughts. Um, I think he's pretty solid, uh, he my take was he wouldn't have brought it forward unless he had the support of both the code officer and the um, Public Works, uh, director in reference to the change that he's proposing.
Okay, so he's going to be here on the twenty-seventh, is that?
I'll, I'll schedule him for the twenty-seventh.
Yeah. Okay. Trying to think whether it makes some sense to circulate this to the folks who are on the street design.
And have them come to that meeting?
If they want to, or at least maybe give us some input at that point in time or listen to what Lee Jay's got to say about why he wants this changed. Because I can recollect at the meetings, I'm sure Phil will concur, that we were trying to eliminate expense for people who have private roads already in existence and are utilizing them. And this is going to add
Right.
expense.
It is.
Uh, so I, but, but I'm interested to hear what he has to say about it, but okay, I think we ought to circulate it around saying this is being at least requested by the planner.
Okay, I'll get it out to the, uh, the other members that were on that board.
Okay, under business, development of purchasing policy. We had a draft here, uh, of a policy from another municipality, as I understand it. I guess I don't know about anybody else, but this reads more to me like an ordinance than it does a policy. Um, and I would be a little concerned, um, if you got a disgruntled, unsuccessful bidder as to whether we're offering or providing some fodder for somebody to say, hey, you didn't follow your informal bidding or your formal bidding process exactly is. Um, and we, we get into some arguments, I think, uh, at least from my perspective, I think we just want to establish, I think, a, as I said, a, just a policy. Um, I mean, we've been operating for a long time since ten years ago at least, uh, with just the recitation of the charter that we go out to bid if it's five grand or more. Um, and we, we've been doing it. Uh, some of the, I think some of the provisions in here could be incorporated, like the emergency section and the bid most advantageous to the town. I like that definition, but I think we could work that all, and went to just a policy statement that, you know, in circumstances, well, as far as I'm concerned, we should have considered the bid process in any purchaser acquisition, but be compelled to do it once we reach some threshold. Um, and, you know, for the obvious reasons of trying to get the best price or for, for the best and most qualified enterprise or person.
So, so your thought at this point is that this may be too detailed?
Yeah, I, I think this is way too detailed, at least that's a fact, I mean, but, um,
Well, it would certainly be one of our longest policies.
That's for sure.
Okay, I can rework it. I'll work it, uh, try to come up with a one or two page document that's a little bit more.
I think, yeah, I think we can really boil it down to
Yeah.
Something pretty simple, I, I think.
So, so Tom, you, you want to just take the, like, maybe the existing policy today where it says five thousand dollars and just maybe just expand that a little bit, right?
Yeah, and, you know, as I said, provide some, uh, opportunities where we face an emergency circumstance or an unforeseen circumstance that going out to the bid process is going to jeopardize some department here in town or some function here in town. You know, then we ought to have an opportunity to make that finding.
And that finding would be made by the board, by the board of select.
Right, exactly. Um, but, but, you know, and obviously I think we got to kind of bring ourselves up to date, as I think you were mentioning at the last meeting we had, five grand today is.
Five grand, no money.
Is kind of, exactly right.
Yep.
And I think, you know, over the years, this board should be reviewing that because pretty soon ten grand isn't going to be.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it was a concern at the meeting about, well, you know, if you set a price and you're going to have to change it again, well, that's, that's everything. I mean, that's a lot of, you know, that happens throughout life, you know, I mean, you, you set something, you make changes. Ordinances get changed, they get updated. There's nothing different with this, so, yeah.
I was thinking that the board should have authority up to twenty or twenty-five thousand. And I saw twenty-five thousand there. That's exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah.
And, and that way, for instance, if Roger needs a piece of equipment right now, he can buy quite, quite a good piece for twenty-five thousand for, for repair of that.
But we have to always keep in mind, I mean, you know, we don't spend money. I mean, the town has told us what we can spend, right? I mean,
Yeah.
I mean, that has to happen first. I mean, you got to get approval of town to spend the dollars and then the process gets put in place, whether it's Roger or somebody else looking for equipment or services or whatever it might be. Um, so I think, you know, So I think, you know, twenty-five may be the right number, but as I said, even if it's below that, I think we, or the board should consider the bid process in almost any circumstance. I mean, send it out and see what kind of, what kind of numbers come back. I mean, otherwise, we're guessing to some degree, although we have guys here who know. I mean, that's just my thought, I mean.
I agree with you as far as sending everything out to bid. This is good, but in emergency, we should have twenty, this board should have twenty or twenty-five thousand. The board can use in emergency without having to go through a meeting, town meeting.
Let's take, for instance, when we were doing this building, we made some calls, spent certain amount of money that would be on the five thousand dollars. Were those, in your eye, were those considered emergency? No, so we did it because it was the right thing to do to get things done. So I think, I don't think that everything has to go out to bid. We just, somehow, we need to have some guidelines to make that determination.
Right, I'm not saying everything has to, I'm just saying we ought to consider it in every circumstance first, and then if you say, you know, if not enough money to worry about, you know, or we know that what the parameters are, so we can go out and simply hire somebody versus the goods, you know, everybody knows what it costs. But, and then, but when we get to a threshold that we should be compelled, whether it's twenty-five, ten,
Right, I agree.
Pick a number.
Yeah, and I like that twenty-five thousand dollar number, I think that's a
Whatever it is. Yeah, I'll try to help Keith, so.
Okay, I'll rework a smaller page here and then flip it over to you and you can take a look at it.
Okay, status of school board member appointment. Guess we have two interested parties here?
Um, yeah, at this point, I had a bunch of people that initially had contacted me. I had sent them all a copy of the application to fill out. And I've had two returned. I had one person indicate to me that they didn't, once they looked at what we were expecting, they bowed out and didn't want to stay in, so. Before you now, we have two. I think you know both of them. Aaron Neto is one of the applicants. Aaron was a school board member previous to this and is showing an interest again to maybe be appointed to fill the vacancy that we have. And Chip Bassett has filled out an application with you folks to be considered. He's provided a copy of his resume, particularly his his expertise in public finance that may be beneficial as well. Again, I think initially when I had placed this out, I was under the impression that this appointment would be until the term expired. And I was wrong in reference to that. This appointment would be until the next election that we would hold. So in speaking with a clerk today, it would be that we would fill the vacant position that we have now with somebody until the end of this fiscal year. And then they would go on the ballot and that would go till 2024. And then Ira Camp's position is open and Ira's already indicated he's not going to run again. And that position would be for three years to 2025, so it would keep our rotation intact. So I corrected that on the website today and anybody I told that to, I tried to get ahold of them and say I may have misled you until I read the statute once again.
That was part of our consideration for the last one that we appointed. We kind of asked a question, you know, is it your intent just to finish this out or you're like, we wanted somebody to really kind of continue on.
So I'm not sure if you're, you're want to have these folks come in and speak to you. I think you already know Aaron. I think she's, she's worked for the community before and obviously you all know Chip, he was on our planning board and he's on the charter review committee and a bunch of other stuff, so. Not sure if you're ready to do it now or wait.
Did Aaron fulfill her three-year term or she didn't run at all? Last time she was on board?
No, I think she did her three years, thirteen to sixteen, and then she didn't run anymore. She didn't run again. I think she was in school. Yeah.
Yeah, it says here that she was on it from 2013 to 2016, so.
Jack, do you remember that? Aaron Neto, she finished her term, right, when she ran it? Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, and I think that's why. I think she recently completed her master of public, master's degree at the University of New England.
Well, I mean, yeah, there's a three years right there, so.
And I think that's why she, she didn't run again, yeah.
What do you think of folks? You want to have an interview or?
No, I mean, I think Did you ask both of them if they take this, if they expect to run in June?
I did not.
I mean, the last time we did this, we kind of interviewed them.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah. I think we should do the same, the same thing again. That's just my opinion, but.
I just, yeah, probably makes some sense to be consistent.
Yeah, did we have, did we come up, we had some questions that we asked them, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't remember, but.
Yeah, I think we were concerned about making sure we asked the same questions of the candidates. Making sure we were fair with both of them in terms of not going off.
So would you, would you like to have would you like to have this happen prior to your next meeting on the twenty-seventh? So say we maybe have somebody come in at six-thirty, somebody in at six-forty-five, it gives them fifteen minutes. You can talk to both of them and then we can move on with the meeting after that. Does that sound like the plan?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, if we can find the questions that we asked them the last time. I don't know if you looked at that. Seems to me I thought we each had a question, but I don't remember. I thought we went along, we went wrong table and he has a question. But I know we asked them all the same question.
We asked them this.
I want to say that you were talking with chairman at the time, and I think you guys just asked, I think we compiled like five questions.
Yeah.
I want to say a few, Tom.
Yeah, I think so.
Because that was the time that, was it Deputy Woodcock won a vote?
All right, I'll see if I can can up some questions to be asked.
Well, if anybody here has any questions, email it to Keith.
Yeah, yeah, if you have questions that you want to have asked.
Well, certainly that the intent of, you know, if they want to continue on.
That's one of the questions we had last time, too, because Ken was
Yeah, that's why, you know, Ken, that's why Ken was the one that we said, you know what? Because if we had someone that said, no, I'm just, you know, I'm just gonna fill in and then I'm going.
Now I recall, yes, we were in the small conference room at the MLD school. We had that, okay.
Yep, remember, we had one candidate that came in and said, listen, you know, I give my hats off to Ken.
Yeah.
You know, he should be the guy.
I remember that.
That was Paul, yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, Juneteenth, Juneteenth is a paid holiday.
Yes, you'd ask me to perhaps look at this. As you know, it's a, it's a recognized as a state holiday by the, by the state of Maine. And your thought process was if we do offer it, you wanted to look at it as being more of a floating holiday. So I tried to provide some language reference to that, to recognize it as a floating holiday that the one thing I did put in there is that the notice would have to be provided to me prior for use and then it would be the manager's discretion whether or not to, to provide it on the day that you requested. Now, generally, that's a that's a no-brainer. I usually provide that, but I wanted to leave that in there in the event that I had a couple staff that wanted to take the same day and it would, in effect, having the office open, which I think was the whole intent, that we didn't want to lose a day of the office being open. So that's why I left it in there as such. So take your comments, suggestions or thoughts in reference to Juneteenth.
Something I would say, when you get the one, one week notice, I think it should be one week notice of employees' selection of a date to utilize for the holiday, right, should be provided.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I think if an employee comes up to Keith and says, hey, I want to take, you know, Monday, I want to take next Monday off or next Tuesday off and use that as my floating holiday, that kind of works, right?
See, I'm just saying, this is a one-week notice.
Right.
Of something, I mean.
And one week notice shall be provided prior to the use at the discretion of the town manager.
Does that mean if town manager thinks three days' notice is enough, he can authorize it?
No, gotta be a week.
At the discretion of the manager.
That would mean if somebody comes, using Dan's example, somebody says, I want to take next Monday off and Keith says, well, somebody else is already gone, he's gotta be able to say, you can't have that one, choose another one.
Right, I think that's, that's the only thing here. Because generally what happens now is beginning of the fiscal year, I get a plethora of requests for vacation. And oftentimes, our staff tries to set their vacations around holidays and things to that nature so they can take advantage of the fact that not only are they using some of their days, but they're also cupping it around a vacation, a holiday, so. And that happens very quickly. And I'm sure you're all associated with that kind of thing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and generally, I, I'm pretty flexible about providing it unless I see that somebody's, you know, two people want to take the same week and then I, that becomes a problem. So a little more massaging of that. Are we, are we all in favor of Juneteenth as a holiday? Can I put that to rest or should I just?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll massage that language a little bit more before you make a determination.
Okay. Okay, Zelma, this is your issue here, Crediford?
Yep, the Crediford Cemetery.
Yeah.
In the woods off the River Road, after you go over the railroad tracks, that horse farm that's on the left, way up in the back in the woods by the end of that big barn, there's an old cemetery. In that cemetery is Abner Crediford Stone. Abner Crediford fought in the Revolutionary War. He is, as far as we know, the only Revolutionary War veteran that we have. It's, I mean, I think Roger knows where this cemetery is. I was in there two years ago with some of the family and we did some brush cutting to try and clear. There's more stones in there than that. But most of them are on the ground or they're broken. That's how old they are. But Abner's stone, as near as we know, is only in two pieces. And it's two pieces that could be repaired and set back up. So the family would like to know if they could get in there and get the stone out, if the town would be willing to repair the stone so that they could set the stone back up where, where it about the area where, where they take it out of. No, there's more than Abner in there. There are several people buried in there, but he is a Revolutionary War veteran.
So they want to remove the two pieces of the broken stone?
They would bring, as far as I know, from what, what his, the relatives said, Abner's stone, and I've seen it and I don't remember, but I think it's in at least two pieces. And you can still see the writing on the stone, not that well, but you can see it. And they would like the stone repaired so that they could set it back up. And so it would be there. A, another relative actually now lives on Leech's Lane and may be able to get entrance to the cemetery easier from Leech's Lane. And the relatives would like to go in and cut some more brush around there. I mean, the cemetery is a protected cemetery. And
Whose property is the cemetery on?
I, it was on Rick and Bev Litchfield's property. And Bev said when they sold the property, and I think that's the lot that they're building the new house on, on the River Road, it would be way at the back corner of that lot. And she said that in the deed, designated it as a cemetery.
So they don't need our permission to go when they are
No, they don't need, they're just looking for somebody to fix the stone, yeah.
We have a cemetery, but what's that money for, Molly?
Yes.
That's about all it is, yeah.
No excess funds in that one?
No. I think the distinction you'd have to make here would be that you're maintaining of veterans.
A veterans, a Revolutionary War veteran.
That would be the only distinction that I could see, because if you
You can open up a Pandora's box.
Yeah, you'd open up a whole bunch of stuff there, so. Don't know what condition the stone's in, don't know if you think that we should be exercising authority to have a stone repaired. Not sure.
Can we get a cost as to what it would be?
Let me Yeah, let me, let me email back the family member, because he is, he is planning on coming up. I went in there with him last time. Judy Balaminos, who was the only person left on the cemetery committee, will also go in there with him. And if we can get in there more easily than what we got in there from the River Road the last time we were in there. And
Take some pictures.
Yeah, take, get some pictures and show exactly what it looks like and what would have to be done. Maybe get some of the names off the other, there is, because there are other family members buried there. But apparently, at one time, at that time, the Crediford family owned the property where that horse farm is, and they probably owned a good piece of property all the way down the River Road. And like a lot of families, they would take a back corner of the land and they would have a family cemetery there.
Aren't there some statutory provisions dealing with our obligation to maintain cemeteries and there's a
No, we only have an obligation to maintain veterans' locations.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's in the statute.
Yeah, boy, I can, I just want to remember.
Did they, did they sunset it?
I don't know. I got to look at that, because I remember J. Archer Knight, he came, you remember him? He, he had a cemetery and there was a either a civil war or some other veteran was buried there and he, there was a statute that said, we were obligated to maintain that thing because of the but I'll, I'll take a peek and see if I can find it.
I, I had this occurred once in, in the town of Burrup when I was working for them and there was, there was a cemetery on this, this person's property and they wanted us to maintain the whole cemetery. And the statue I looked like said, we were only obligated to maintain the cemetery, the plot in which the veteran was located in. That was it. So we went up there during Veterans Day or Memorial Day and made sure that that area where his plot was, was clean. We, we did mow the rest of it, but.
You couldn't mow this because back where that is now, we were in there with, with big, big lopers trying to cut down some of the brush that's grown in there.
I'll have to look at that statue. I don't know if they sunset it or not.
I don't know either. I haven't looked at it since for a while since.
I have an old picture somewhere of my father-in-law walking into the old town hall, the one we're going to tear down, with a piece of a cemetery stone, a piece of a stone. I don't know which cemetery it came from, but it was probably one of the cemeteries up by the Jones Farm. And he brought it in to the town for the town to do something about it. There was a newspaper article about that stone and a picture of my father-in-law in his bond boots and his overalls and and a picture of my father-in-law in his bond boots and his overalls and the speech that he gave the selectmen about neglecting their duty about taking care of the cemetery stones.
Jay Archer Knight told us so.
Yeah.
Approval of a payable warrant?
Actually, we have both.
We have both today.
Yeah.
Yep, I'll make that motion.
And the other business, Dan?
Yep. Do we have any update on the, the rec program letter?
I emailed Keith Fleming today and got an email back from him. He's, he's calling him DOE, he's been calling CDC, he's just ducking them. They don't want to give a decision. They won't make a decision. Keith, I, I wrote an email back saying
You're a lot nicer than me.
Saying, to help, you know, help them, let's do something. And Keith, likewise, that Jen emailed back saying, you know, they were concerned about these bubbles and, you know, like cross bubbling or something like that with kids, and Jen points out, yeah, there is, there isn't any. We're in L, LDA, yep. So I, I don't know what's, he copied everybody that's been involved thus far, so, you know, maybe we can, I can touch base with Art LeBlanc again and see. You know, I'm, I'm just saying, why don't we just move forward and do it? And I think that's what Keith's
That's, that's what I've been saying all along, is that I think it's a local issue, and I think it could be solved locally. It's just the, the will. If people have got the will to solve it.
As I said, I mean, I know they were concerned about if, you know, something happened and the kid contracted, and all of a sudden they think there's, I don't think there's any liability.
I don't think so either.
Or the RSU, because of the main tort claims act, I mean, it's just not going to work. But it's a political issue, okay?
Yeah, if we don't think there's liability, just get it done, right? Just to me, it's
Well, I think we're all on, on board. I think that
It's the RSU discussion.
Yeah, I think Art may have a, may have more of a challenge than this board has on.
Terry's been involved with this, right, Dr. Cooper?
Yes.
I believe so.
Anything else?
Anybody?
Make motion, we adjourn.
All in favor?
8:31 PM.